Okay, good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners' meeting for Tuesday, August 13th. I'm the Chair, Sean Flowerday. With me is Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioners Matt Schulty and Krista Yocum. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's open meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancasterne.gov. Reporting options are available upon request. Brings us to Item 1, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' meeting, held on August 6, 2024?
Move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulty?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to Item 2, Claims. 2A, Approval of the Claims Processed Through August 9, 2024. And on note, there is an amendment for the payroll.
I move approval of the claims, including the amendment for payroll through August 7, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulty?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 2B, It's an Approval of a Claim to the Mediation Center Incorporated, the amount of $2,400.
I move approval of this claim.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulty?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Epstein.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 2C, Approval of the Claims Including Billing for Goods and Services Beyond the 90-Day Time Period Provided in Nebraska Revise Statute 23-135 to Column Software PVC, dated August 12, 2024, for a total of $17.55.
Move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulty?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to Item 3, Consent Items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent, and the individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the Approval of A, Amendments to the Following County Contracts, C-18-0468 with Data Shield Corporation for On-Site Secure Document Shredding, C-22-0695 with the Shammer Association Incorporated to Add Additional Design Services Related to Replacement of County Culvert S231, C-24-0474 with Voices of Hope for the Lancaster County ICJR Project, C-24-0131 with Region 5 Systems for the Beta Crit Training, C-23-0668 with Syntas Corporation for the Annual Services of Rental and Cleaning of Mats, Various Linen and Related Items for the County, C-23-0692 with Ferguson Enterprises LLC, and C-23-0693 with Heritage Landscape Supply Group for the Annual Supply of Ice Melt for the County, B, Amendments to the Following County Contracts for the Annual Supply of Traffic and Custom Designs, C-23-0542 with Cornhusker State Industries Department Corrections, C-23-0543 with Lionel Enterprises of Ohio LLC, C-23-0544 with Vulcan Incorporated Doing Business as Vulcan Signs Vulcan Aluminum, C, Right-of-Way Contracts with the Following, the Donald L. Tiedemann Family Trust, Southwest, excuse me, South 25th Street and Princeton Road, the amount of $253, Ronald and Myra Morrison, Martell Road and South 162nd Street, the amount of $955, Kathleen Benchuk, West Waverly Road and Northwest 40th Street, the amount of $1,543, Utility Permit 2559, allowing Windstream LLC, Windstream Nebraska LLC to install fiber optic communication, Change Order 3 to County Contract C-23-0764 with Hampton Commercial Construction Incorporated for Construction of the Civil Protective Custody Center. The Change Order adds Exterior Sign Removal to the Scope of Work, Increases the Total Amount of the Contract Price by $4,648.73. Change Order 2 to County Contract C-23-0867 with J.J. Tay Construction LLC to Add Incentive Payment Regarding Early Completion and Structure C-284, an Amount Not to Exceed $30,000. G, Grant Contracts with the Following, the Bridge Behavioral Health for Safe Passage Behavioral Health Engagement Site Program, and the Amount of $64,347.72, Houses of Hope for the Transitional Residential Substance Use Halfway House Program, and the Amount of $48,410, Good Neighbor Community Center for the Family Resource Program, and the Amount of $128,000, Center for People in Need for the People's Pantry Program, and the Amount of $56,796.64, Cedars Youth Services for the Emergency Shelter Program, and the Amount of $314,150, each Grant Contracts with the Following, the Voices of Hope for the Healthy Relationship Support Program, and the Amount of $8,250, Cedars Youth Services for the Life Quest Program, and the Amount of $25,000, I, Grant Contract with the Cedars Youth Services for Tracking Services Program, and the Amount of $27,375, J, Receive and Place and File the Following Reports for July 2024, the Records and Information Management and the County Clerk, and finally, K, Setting a Public Hearing on Tuesday, August 27, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building Regarding an Amendment to Lancaster County General Assistance Guidelines.
Move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulty?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to New Business, Item 4, 4A, A Declaration in the Matter of Declaring Disaster an Emergency Pursuant to Nebraska Revise Statute 81-829.50, in Response to Strong and Dangerous Storms in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska.
Good morning. My name's Amanda Burkey. I'm the Deputy Director for Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. So, we have the Declaration on File already. This is kind of just an update as to why we're declaring. So, on Wednesday, July 31st, during the late afternoon and early evening, Lincoln Lancaster County experienced a severe weather event resulting in significant impact. The storm caused considerable damage to electrical service infrastructure and trees throughout Lancaster County. Estimates of the Damage and Cost of Initial Response, Restoration of Services, and Cleanup and Disposal of Debris was nearly $2.3 million. The Estimate will likely increase as recovery efforts continue. For this reason, Lancaster County should file a Disaster Declaration with the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency. I do have damage and costs estimates, if you would like to hear those.
Just clarifying, the $2 million, that's just publicly, like, government-owned space, right?
Correct. Yes.
Doesn't include personal property?
No, it does not. So, as of this morning, Nemo was advising that they're working to get the federal disaster declaration, but that will only be for public assistance at this time. It will not be for individual assistance.
And that's the purpose of us declaring an emergency, correct, Amanda?
Correct. So, the public assistance will give organizations in government, nonprofit, any emergency work in repair and replacement for disaster-damaged facilities, which may include debris removal, which is a big-ticket item for us, emergency protective measures, roads and bridges, water control facilities, buildings and equipment, utilities, parks and rec and other facilities.
There's been enough damage around here.
Yeah, no kidding.
Say we could take the time off. Well, thank you for being here. I move approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulty?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 4B, Resolution in the Matter of the 2024-2025 Annual Cost of Living Wage Adjustments for Unrepresented County Classified Employees, Attorneys Ones and Twos, Supervising Attorneys, District Court Staff Attorneys, Law Clerks, Emergency Management Specialists, Emergency Management Training Specialists, Deputy Sheriff Captains, and Psychologists.
I, I would move approval of this. This would, and I'll wait, but I move approval.
I'll second.
This came about as a result of a long discussion with the HR Department, and considering of a number of factors, and I would just say to two groups, you know, we walk a line up here, the five of us have to make decisions of the use of taxpayer dollars and the use of providing services mandated by the State of Nebraska for the citizens of our county. So, we're always walking that line to what's enough, what's too much, where do we set the numbers? This, this number, we are doing it because we believe we have good people, we want to retain them. I would just ask if they take a minute and be thankful that they're working for Lancaster County, because this is a good place to work in many, many regards. So, all of us pulling together provide the best services for our county. So, that's how we arrive at this, and...
That's very well said. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I guess I'd just maybe point out for people in the public who, because it doesn't say it in what was just read, it's a four-and-a-half percent increase, which is in the underlying documents.
Okay. No further discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulty?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4C, A Resolution in the Matter of an Application to Amend a Class C Liquor License for an Addition to the License Area for the Shed Wedding Venue LLC.
Do we have anyone here?
My name's Courtney, excuse me, sorry, my name's Courtney. We added a fencing area to behind the reception venue that we have, so we want to include that in our liquor license.
And Courtney, thank you for being here this morning. You have, there's a process for all of this, and as I scan the documents, it looks like you've met the, you've agreed to all the expectations put upon you by the various county departments.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, we know it's a process, and I appreciate you going through it. I would move approval.
I'll second that.
Yeah? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
It's just nice to have places like the Shed available, where we can gather and celebrate big events.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Schulty?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
4D is Proclaiming August 15, 2024, as Barney Day.
Suppose you'd better read the proclamation in.
I would be happy to.
We all want to hear it.
Okay. Proclamation before the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, in the Matter of Proclaiming August 15, 2024, as Barney Day in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska. Whereas, on this day, Barney, the beloved therapy dog of Lancaster County, celebrates his third birthday, and whereas Barney's gentle presence has provided comfort and fur enchipped in those in need, particularly during challenging times, whereas through his rough, ushly, rough, illusionary work, Barney has shown even the smallest acts of kindness can have a profound impact, and whereas Barney's dedication has made him top dog in the hearts of Lancaster County citizens, and whereas we recognize a magnificent dog committed to sharing joy wherever he trots, now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska hereby proclaim August 15, 2024, as Barney Day in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, and witness thereof, we have hereto signed on August 13, 2024, by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska.
Some agenda items are just so much more fun than others, but in all seriousness, Barney does have a very serious and specific purpose here in our chambers that's important, so I move approval.
I, I would second and just add that we're all, we all smile a little better when Barney's in the room, and we appreciate his efforts to help us get through all the things, and if the Legislature stays in session much longer, we may need to get him some help, so...
We should take him down there. Is there any further discussion on the Barney Day proclamation? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulty?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We just want to say thank you for your continued support and love of Barney. Without all of you, it wouldn't have been possible for him to be here and to bring happiness and joy to people every single day. And to just lay there.
Thank both of you.
He fell asleep, didn't he?
Yes. Thanks both of you for your work with Barney, because that really is important.
That really, that really deserves it.
An additional duty that you're taking on with huge benefits.
Oh, absolutely. We definitely win every day. Do you want to say anything?
Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work, Barney.
You have to wake him up to tell him now.
Right, no, I know that.
While we're through here, let's get out of here.
Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Item 4E, A Special Designated License Application from J.J. Baumann with Central Light and Recreation Center for an Event on August 17, 2024, at the Sprague Martell Community Center.
My name is J.J. Baumann, and you guys have any questions for me pertaining to this SDL license?
J.J., the only one I have is, I haven't looked at your paperwork, but you've completed all that, and you understand the expectations that are put upon you.
That is correct.
And you find them agreeable.
Absolutely.
Well, congratulations. Have a great event on the 17th. I move approval.
Sounds great.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thanks for doing it the right way.
Yep, thank you.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulty?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4F, Appointment of the Following County Representatives to the Youth and Family Crisis Response Center Governing Board for Three-Year Terms, Sarah Hoyle, the Director of Lincoln Lancaster County Human Services, and Kristy Bauer, the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer.
I move approval.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Probably best if we don't.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulty?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4G is the Acceptance of a Subaward Grant for, at Special Conditions, for the Nebraska Crime Commission's Office of Violence Prevention Grant Program, in the Amount of $138,941.
Move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulty?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4H, A Right-of-Entry Agreement with the City of Lincoln, granting the City the Right to Enter County Property Located at the 15K Street and 555 South 9th Street, the Adjacent Parking Lot, to Perform Construction Activities.
Good morning. Abby LaTral, Assistant City Attorney for the City of Lincoln, and before you is a Right-of-Entry Agreement. This is kind of the next step in a project that was here not too long ago involving the lot directly to the west of us. City and County exchanged some property, and the City will be constructing a permanent supportive housing unit for chronically homeless individuals on the western part of that lot. County now has full ownership of the Aging Partners Building, which has been vacant for some time, and what this Right-of-Entry Agreement does is grants the City of Lincoln and its contractors the ability to use that Aging Partners Building for staging during the construction period, and also to enter onto the property to demolish that building, which was part of the purchase agreement. And then the third part is there will be a common access driveway between the two lots for visitors to both sites to use, and the City will be constructing that shared driveway and places for the county to install security measures. I guess the other pertinent provision of this Right-of-Entry Agreement is that the City is requiring all contractors to name Lancaster County as additional insured, and so risks should be mitigated on all sites. I can answer any questions that you may have.
I think this is the next step, Abby, so I appreciate all your efforts to keep us apprised of what's going on. I move approval.
I'll second that. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulty?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4I, A Contract with the Nebraska Machinery Company LLC to Provide Preventative Maintenance on the County Cat Motorgrades. The Cost of the County is not to exceed $250,000.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, and this morning I have with me Chris Mayer, our Road Superintendent. This is a contract where Cat has agreed to go out to the location of our motor graders so they don't have to come into the city for maintenance. It's a very smart way to do maintenance. It's much more efficient than us currently doing general maintenance in our shops, and so that's why we're bringing this forward.
I move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just say that one thing I've observed in a number of county, of our departments, and especially in the Engineering Department, is this drive for better efficiencies, you know, better ways to keep the equipment up to date on the roads, and this seems like one more step, so thank you, Pam, for bringing this before us.
You can thank Mr. Mayor, sir.
Oh, thank you, Chris.
He is the expert on motor grader maintenance.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulty?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4J, Recommendation from the Purchasing Agent on behalf of the County Engineer to Award and Execute a Purchase Order for Gravel Surface Course Materials to the Following, Buell Trucking, in the Amount Not to Exceed $150,000, RL Team in Construction, in the Amount of $685,976, and Votscapes Incorporated, in the Amount of $1,250,000. and Votscapes Incorporated, the amount of $1,250,300.
Chris Meyer, Road Superintendent for Lancaster County. We've got the three awards here, just low bidders for this. Our gravel piles have been very low and almost non-existent as of now, so we're trying to replenish them.
Are we able to get the contracts we need, Chris, to get back where we want to be before winter gets here?
I believe so.
Good, I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to add, Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, that you may note that there are 10 piles and three contractors. We do this so that we can give local small business the best opportunity to efficiently engage with us so that they have an opportunity to grow in Lancaster County. You may note this is more gravel than we've bought in the past. When I did come forward for the budget, our line item was increased because of the shortages that there have been for rock and gravel. And you also may notice that, hey, this is just gravel. So on our rock bid, we tried to do something a little different, hopefully to mitigate dust issues in the county. We did not get bids on that option. So we have put the gravel or the more, the rock, back out to bid. And so we'll be back with that in the upcoming weeks.
We do, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Brings us to item 4K. We have recommendations from the Personnel Policy Board. There are two of them, I'll read them both. The request to revise and change the title of the Land Records Technician 1 to Real Estate Specialist, and a request to revise and change the title and pay grade of Land Records Technician 2 to Senior Real Estate Specialist.
I will move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
4L, Berkeley Public Entity Liability Sexual Abuse Application as a standard supplemental for the county's application of Berkeley for General Liability Insurance.
I don't see anybody here on these.
We did this last year, I think. This has become kind of standard.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll move approval.
All right, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
4M, the Lancaster County Statement of Values for the Purposes of Lancaster County Insurance Policies.
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
4N, documents related to renewal of certain insurance policies at the Mental Health Crisis Center with RSUI Group Incorporated. They are the renewal application for miscellaneous medical professional liability insurance and a supplemental application for network security and privacy coverage.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item 5, our Legislative Update.
So I think, you know, the big thing to talk about is obviously the property tax package as it makes its way along. I think Commissioner Vest, you had some things you wanted to go over regarding sort of NACO's response?
You know, we have, a lot of people are monitoring what's going on in the Capitol and it's challenging because things are being held, bills are being held until almost the time they're being revealed for debate. So it's hard to keep up with everything that's going on. We're fortunate that we have some really good people working on this. But NACO has identified a number of concerns, excuse me. You know, nobody is arguing about property tax changes, but the mechanism and the tools that we use to achieve property tax relief are going to have long-term consequences. And this needs to be done in a very thoughtful and considerate manner so that when we make these decisions, the consequences aren't worse than the current state of affairs. And I think that's the complaint that everybody has, is that isn't happening. Hasn't happened and isn't happening now. We, I was at the Realtors Association with Matt on Friday and Courtney Gilbertson said that Kawasaki had done a calculation on the proposed changes and their tax bill for non-property tax items would be greater than their bill for property taxes and they would still only be getting a reduction in property taxes, not elimination. So it's just not, it's not a bill that we should be supporting without a lot more time and a lot more thoughtful consideration. Having said that, I've talked to a number of people and I think Commissioner Flowerday, you may want to speak on this. Lancaster County has asked for certain considerations regarding caps going forward.
Right.
It appears that that message has gotten through.
Absolutely.
And the legislature did grant us the things that we feel like are important to do business as county government.
I would argue they've actually given us more than.
Oh, don't say that.
But they just have, on this, like, look, there's plenty of things in this package that I have no love for at all. But, I mean, in the public safety exemptions, they're just, they've gone, they've given us the, you know, the full public safety exemptions that we were looking for and they added, I mean, this board didn't necessarily ask for have county attorneys and public defenders in there. They're in there. That makes our life easier. So just on, on, on only the hard cap section, we ask, you know, we ask for X, Y, and Z, right? We ask for public safety and inflation indicator and growth.
And growth.
There's no doubt that all three of those things are in there and in there, I think in a really satisfying degree. So I, I think this board should take a position of support for that. The hard cap language, we can delay discussion or, I mean, the bill, again, the language came out yesterday, you know, and it's 140-something pages and people are going to be mowing through it for the next several days. And there's a ton of things in there that I don't have any particular love for and things that I think are still going to be worked through and things that I think are half-finished. So like, I think we can delay on, you know, the total package, but I think we just have to acknowledge if we're going to be consistent that on the, on the hard cap language, we should take a position of support just for that portion. Because they, they did what we asked, like, I don't know else, they did what we asked.
I started reading the bill last night and I got a few pages in and realized it was 144 pages and I was not going to be able to read them all. And there is a lot in this bill that really does concern me.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And I do feel that it's being rushed too much for something this big and all of the consequences that it has. But I do agree that for the county portion, for our portion, we are getting what we had specified and I do want to be part of the solution and collaborative, but we also need to assure that we can do the work we need to do.
Right.
At the county level.
And there's things, you know, I mean, there's things that came out in this language that hasn't been talked about before, ever, until three days ago. Like, I mean, the 25% reduction on local option sales tax doesn't impact us necessarily, or at least not, not in a major way. But, you know, I don't ever remember that being part of the discussions. That was brand new. And that's a real blow to cities and I think it's going to be a real problem to our partners over there in any city. But at the same time, it just, if we're going to be consistent, we said we would support it if we got X, Y, and Z and we got X, Y, and Z.
We support that portion. I think we need to be very specific.
That's right.
I would agree with what you guys are saying. I might add a couple other comments to it. One is, yes, there may be some concerns from the community, but it's not really our job to speak for Kawasaki or for the Realtors. Our job is to speak for the county. And we made it clear what our expectation was, our hopes were, rather I should say. And exactly how they get there and what processes the legislature uses is up to the legislature to do. It's not really up to us to oppose a bill because we don't like the speed at which it's happening or something like that. So I think we should absolutely throw our support behind what's, you know, because we're getting what counties need to do the county business.
Yeah.
I'm going to add a caveat here to what's just been said. I think we're in agreement. I'm hearing agreement on saying we support the cap language that's been proposed and is before us. But there are more issues involved here because just having gone that far, one of the ways the state's proposing to reduce property taxes is jail reimbursement costs. And that sounds really good on paper, but this has been done numerous times throughout Nebraska's history and guess how long it lasts? It doesn't last. The next legislature will say, well, we can't afford that and they'll pull that back and there goes property tax relief. So unless we get some kind of language, we're really, we're just kidding ourselves. We're just making promises that we're never going to intend to keep. And there are other things, we could go on and on. That's enough of that.
I'm not, I'm not sure we can speak to their intent. I think what you're trying to say is one thing, is that cheese has moved before and you're recognizing that. But I don't think, I don't think he was intending to not follow through with that.
I would say that every legislature's intentions were perfectly good when they made the promise. Not one has lived up to that promise. Not one. Not once.
Mike Friend's a Douglas County Commissioner and I've heard him say that the worst vote he ever has taken was to remove jail reimbursement from the counties when he was a state legislator. You know, he really regrets it now.
As long as the state continues to mandate services without any funding streams, then property taxes are challenging. I'm going to make a motion that we support, we indicate our support for the language related to caps and only caps, saying that we, we said what would work for us and we feel like the legislature has lived up to that. So we support that portion of this bill.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. The one amendment that I just might make is with the understanding that that support would change if that language changed.
I would.
There's just a lot of moving targets right now, you know?
I think that's smart.
You know, so.
That makes sense to me, Sean. I would add, I would add that language.
We need, we need what's in it right now and I just don't want anything to change from there. So, yeah.
I'm just going to add that the kind of conversations we're having here are the kind of conversations that need to take place way in front of dramatic changes during our.
Absolutely.
So thank you for your input. Thank you for your input. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yes. Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Maybe just a point of question.
Yeah.
Our lobbyist has oftentimes been charged with communicating that. Is there, do we have a way we want to communicate this to our?
I was going to direct the staff to just get in touch with Kissel Cohode after this meeting.
Okay, perfect.
That seems, traditionally when we've done things on Tuesdays and taken positions, Dave or Kristi just immediately relays that decision to them.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
No, it's a fair question because we have Legislative Update sometimes on Tuesdays and, hey, the legislative team isn't here. I don't have anything else. It's the only thing anyone's talking about at the legislature. Any other items? If not, it will move to public comment.
No, I don't.
Mr. Clerk, please proceed.
Item 6 is public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak and items relating to county business, not the agenda, may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to one appearance of up to five minutes. That time may be not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the Chair.
Robert Borer. The Supreme Law of Nebraska is our state constitution. It was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other. Quoting Article, quoting Article 1, Section 4, "Religion, morality, and knowledge being essential to good government." Close quote. You took an oath to that constitution. Article 1, Section 2 says that government is supposed to be instituted by consent of the people. That is by an election of the people. Why can't you see that this makes the people the owners of elections? Never mind the fact that we pay for them. I don't know why you can't, I do know why you can't see it. You are selfish and that selfishness has blinded you. It is obvious to everyone with half a brain who is not selfish that elections belong to the people and that the only job of government with respect to elections is to assist in their honest, transparent, and verifiable administration. It is evident, self-evident in fact, to any thinking person that elections cannot belong to government because that would be tantamount to putting the fox in charge of the hen house. The conflict of interest is too great, the temptation too strong. Power is intoxicating and therefore not easily relinquished. And with computerization of elections, the means were created to readily cheat and remain in power. There is a saying out now, by Democrats, of course, that the greatest threat to democracy is an incumbent president who refuses to relinquish power. That is an idiotic, gaslighting statement of projection by Democrats. First of all, because we are not a democracy, we are a constitutional republic. And second, because Democrats are primarily the ones who not only refuse to relinquish power, but seek to turn that power into tyrannical power. As I've said before, anyone in government who says that we must trust a private company to give us honest election results is a tyrant. It is obvious that all of you, save one, are tyrannical Democrats because you grovel at the feet of Ebner and Bennet, who are also tyrannical Democrats, albeit closet Democrats. The system has become rigged. Over at least the last 20 years, people have been actively recruited, people like Ebner, to fill the office of Secretary across all 50 states who are willing to compromise their integrity, assuming they had any to begin with, and farm the administration of our elections out to private, non-governmental organizations. The whole purpose for this arrangement is to avoid getting their hands directly dirty so that they can claim plausible deniability. Ebner was and is one of those people. And you have made yourselves party to his crimes. The gig is up. Your plausible deniability is out the window in any real court of law. Justice is coming. In closing, as with, excuse me, as I've said, you have no right to force us to trust such an arrangement. The fact that you continue to try to do so shows that you are not public servants but tyrants. That is little Hitlers, just like Ebner, running around who don't love your neighbor as yourself, which by the way, is a prerequisite for entry into the kingdom of God and of heaven. When government wants to commit a crime, it uses a proxy and they go behind closed doors to cut the deal. Government and its proxies are the primary purveyors of mis, dis, and malinformation. And that includes our own Deputy Secretary, he's the specialist at it. I say to everyone listening, beware of these false prophets before me today, these false public servants these false public servants, who come to you in sheep's clothing, but inwardly they are ravenous wolves. Give us back our elections.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Dwayne Rousher. Good morning. Just wanted to speak a little bit about the approval processes and the things that go through and the reviews that you make. I mean, you go through and you do the expenditures, and you go and approve them, even though we don't know the dollar amounts that you're actually approving on a weekly basis. So where, where is the detail? You know, is that stuff being reviewed? You spend more time looking at bridges and things like that, the roads, the safety of the public, and the inspections that need to be made on those things. But where is the inspection and review of the voting process that we go through? Why aren't we willing to take a look at it? It was mentioned this morning, well, it's easier for the county. What does that really mean? Are you trying to find an easier way out and not look at the details? Now, don't put your head in the sand. Let's take a look, really. Get the information that we need. Get those voter records, the details we need to have to review the process that goes through. Are we that blind that we don't want to see what's going on?
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay. Seeing none, move down to announcements.
Announcements. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, August 15th, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, at 9 a.m., with the Board of Equalization immediately following in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on LNK TV. LNK TV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LNK TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item eight is adjournment.
We adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned. All right. We will now come together as the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, August 13.
Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's open meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, August 6, 2024.
Move approval of minutes?
No, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We will now reconvene the 2024 451 tax exemption on real property and personal property public hearing. We, we only have recommended for denials, right? Do we have any recommended for approvals?
There were what's a four?
Yeah. Well, we have.
Yeah, I don't, I got paper in front of me. My laptop's not open.
I mean, this, here is the denials.
Right, okay, it's, it's just the ones we talked about. My, my question is, is there anything new from last week?
I don't think so. Here's the approvals.
No new information.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on the approvals? Let's just start there. Seeing none. Okay, we'll move on to the denials. Is there anyone here to speak on the denials?
Good morning.
Swear you're both in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Okay, so what I've got here, Gary Dixon with the Steamfitters Plumbers, Local Union 464. I do have a copy of our continuing education classes that will be held at our 2000 Westo. It goes through.
Can you throw it on the projector here?
Yeah, or you guys want copies, or?
Sure, but do you have copies?
Yeah, I've got copies.
Oh, just hand it to the clerk then.
Yeah.
It might be good if we could still throw one up on the projector.
So this is a copy of our continuing education classes that we're going to have. We're still going to have our welding classes and our backflow classes at our 36th Street location, because this one here will not be set up for that. So these are basically, will be the classroom classes that will be held there, and the dates of each class that are going on. Most of these start up as soon as September, I think 11th.
You said welding.
I think is the first class.
You said welding, and what was the other one that would be at?
Ah, the backflow.
Backflow.
Yeah, backflow licensing.
Right.
Correct. They'll be at the old site until?
This building's.
This building's 100%.
Completed.
But the rest of them will be at this site.
Yep.
Basic refrigeration, intermediate refrigeration.
Basic electricity.
Electricity.
Intermediate refrigeration, too. Electricity.
I'm seeing basic refrigeration starts on September 9th, and that will be.
Yep, September 9th, yep.
That will be on the property inquiry today.
Yep, yep.
Six-hour Lincoln Code update class. But.
Yep, yeah, so.
That's a gangbuster.
Yeah, yep, so there's going to be a lot going on there with everything, with the dates and everything, so it's going to be trying to, because we just met with the architect yesterday, we did our walkthrough, so he's going to start working out on some of the plans and some of the layouts, where we are moving forward on that, as far as that goes. So once he's done with that, we kind of get going, ball rolling with that, then that's when we start looking for contractor bids to come in and perform the work necessary for the remodeling there, so.
I'm open to commentary from the other parties involved here, the county attorney's office or the assessor's office, but to me, this meets the standard, the burden of saying this is for the purposes that they bought the property. And I would be inclined to accept, make a motion. I guess I will make a motion to approve.
Wish I would ask Matt to make a motion.
Oh, public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah, but. That's a good, but I would say I'm in support of this, and when we're out of public hearing.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I, I think that's right. The one thing that just should be said, and this is true for all, everyone we're talking about today, is state's really pushing back on some of these, so we might approve it, and the state might kick it back out. I'm just letting you know that.
Sure, yep, and I understand.
Just don't be surprised.
Right, yep, we understand.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Dan Zigg with the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. I am a little more hesitant than Commissioner Vest on this one, and the primary reason being that for it to be the educational exemption which they're requesting means an institution operates exclusively for the purposes of offering regular courses. And I just don't see that being operate exclusively for educational courses. Typically, this has been reserved for things like LPS, UNL, Wesleyan, things more like that, where it tends to fall. There are a lot of things that could argue that would also fit within this. A yoga studio could argue that that's what, that's why they exist, but we would not say that meets the educational.
I didn't think we were going after this because the educational, I thought we were going after it because the.
The property.
Well, it, because, because it's a nonprofit, like their, their current hall, or their current location is tax exempt.
Yep, correct.
And they were just showing us that they are using the property.
The new.
The new property for union and nonprofit-related activities. This happens to be education, but we weren't pursuing it because it was education, we were pursuing it because it was just nonprofit activities, in this case, classes.
So part of when I look at these is, I'm kind of limited to what's on the agenda. I believe last week, Mr. Durbin asked, I look at some of these. So when I see someone saying, we're coming here as an educational organization, that's the lens through which I look at it through. So I didn't have that background on it. But as Commissioner Flaherty didn't know, I mean, the state is really scrutinizing these now. I guess I don't have enough information based on that. When I saw the educational, it caused me to pause and go, I don't know if this meets the educational threshold.
Right. And, and I actually would probably agree with you on that. I think, I think it probably doesn't, because it's not, I mean, this isn't a school district or anything like that. It, we're just not coming, I didn't, I didn't think that's why we were coming at it from that. I thought it just happened to be that it was, they're using it for their nonprofit activities. In this case, that nonprofit is teaching classes, but.
So are you, are you looking at more as like a charitable organization then, rather than?
Well, how does, how, how is it that, that your normal hall is tax exempt?
It's all through our joint apprenticeship committee is who, how it is. So that's how it's all through there, because our educates the apprenticeship training program.
So it is educational.
It's educational through the apprenticeship training, so.
Okay, all right, then I'm wrong. Then, then we are coming at it from the educational standpoint, but how is it if the one, and they're using one property that's currently tax exempt for education, and that's been approved? What's the difference?
I was not part of it, why it was approved before.
Yeah.
Just looking at it now, it causes me to pause a little bit and go, I'm not sure if it's exempt.
Okay. Wait. I just want, Dan, thank you for coming forward and sharing your expertise with it. It's always welcome, and I deeply appreciate it. Thank you. I don't have anything for this one. Matt.
Good.
Thank you for being.
Thank you.
Could I have an extra copy of that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other, anyone else who would like to speak on recommended denials?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please go ahead.
Good morning, Rhonda Mattingly, Bridges to Hope Executive Director, and I believe the reason I understood our denial was due to inactivity, no progress that was seen. I had forwarded the, the design, the layouts, and yesterday, we met with our architects, and I don't think I can get this on the screen, and I don't know that y'all want copies. But what we've been doing this whole entire year has been working out the logistics of the easements and the infrastructure, et cetera. And so we signed on Thursday the amendment, administrative amendment to condense the property or relabel the property as one lot versus 12, which initially I had to apply for 12 exempt applications, because it was 12 different lots. So that administrative amendment has been submitted for approval to make that one lot. And in doing that, we also had to condense the property to 18 homes versus 20 homes. That's yesterday, what we were meeting on was figuring out the minor details of everything, the donation center, the emergency exits, the lighting, the security cameras, all of that being put into place. And then our architect is now working on submitting a permit for the grading to start, because we can begin the grading regardless of the property changes, any amendment or anything to that. So we definitely have been diligently working and, and trying to progress on this. It's just a new project, and, and new things are coming up that people are not how, you know, aware of how to deal with it, not certain how to deal with it and everything's. But I do have all of these, if anyone would like to take a look. It's a giant book.
Like a lot of progress last week.
Been very busy, Rhonda, and I appreciate that. I'm going to let Dan go first.
So this was another one that I was asked to take, look at, and I went through the Department of Revenue's regulations. The one thing that's made pretty clear throughout the regulations is that property which is vacant and unused for any purpose is not entitled to an exemption. One of the examples that they give is properties bought, it's held vacant for several years, no exemption is allowed. Now, where it gets to be a little more, call it gray, is there is a carve-out for things that are under construction. But there's not a lot of definition about when does something, when is something considered under construction, because you could have a plan on a vacant piece of land and a drawing of where the church is going to sit or whatever it is, but is that really to the point of saying that it's under construction? So, but I understand, too, that grading's often part of construction as well. So we have kind of this little caveat there, saying if it's under construction, it can meet the exemption. There's just not a lot of clarity about when does that under construction actually start.
Did you say grading?
Grading, property.
And has there been grading done on this property yet?
He's just submitting the permit. We have to submit a permit for the grading. You know, my preference was the building would have started January 1, February 1, but again, it's, it's all these little intricacies that are coming about due to the fact that this is a very new project and, and never been done, so.
Didn't we, didn't we approve a church based on basically intention to have construction of a parking lot? I mean, I don't even think they had anything like a blueprint.
They changed their plan to renting the, the building that was on it.
Do you recall this one, Dan?
That was one.
It was out kind of maybe towards the Cree area. They bought a house right next to it, and they were kind of, maybe we'll use it to rent to a pastor, maybe we'll make it into a parking lot, maybe we'll hold it for a lawn mower. And I, I don't remember where they ever came down, but it was kind of that some uses would be exempt, some would not be exempt, and I don't know if they eventually said, we're going to rent it to a pastor, what the plan was.
Missionary, I think, or.
It was a missionary, okay.
I believe. And I think what, we gave them some options to look at that said, these are paths that would be allowable. They chose one, and then we did approve that, that request at that time. That's my recollection.
But it was on intent, and it wasn't rented at that moment.
Well, sure, but the property was there, yeah. I'd agree with that statement.
I don't, I mean, if we're, if we're going.
I.
Clearly, we're accepting a pretty open interpretation of it. I, I feel like if we're accepting that, then I'm okay with this, but.
The problem is, and we see this in every area we deal with, we never make decisions on a one-time basis. You know, we're talking about a vacant lot. Best of intent, Rhonda, let me just thank you for taking this on from the beginning. This is important. This will be a positive step in our community. Want this to succeed. But I, I'm just saying, at this point in time, we have a vacant lot, and we have a commitment. Clearly, I don't think she just found those lying around in the library somewhere. I think the commitment's real.
It's a good prop if it is.
Yeah, right.
She'd do that more.
I, I think the intent is real, the intent's real, and next year at this time, we'll be having a very different discussion about this property. But we are looking at this property at this point in time. That's my concern.
Anything you'd like to add, or?
Um, you know, I just know we have been extremely diligent, and it's been like no fault of our own, and I know our, our organization is very tight budgeted. We're a very small organization, and every dollar makes a difference, and.
How much is the property tax on this property?
So for October through November, December of last year, I did go ahead and pay that. That was $2,400, $2,500, just for three months. So maybe about $10,000 a year we're looking at, and that's one of our employees.
That's, I was going to say, that's significant in a small organization. And I, the, the part that bothers me is that the work has been, you've been trying to move the work forward and have hit barriers. And so it's not because you've been sitting on it.
Correct.
It's because of the barriers that were before you.
I have maybe five minutes to speak with her, just give me a little more information. Maybe come back. Would that be okay with this board?
I think yes.
Should we recess the public hearing, or should we, we'll recess the public hearing for five minutes? What? Yeah, I know. I don't know. Anybody know any good jokes? I don't know, anybody know any good jokes?